Okay, so you're staying on Airport. You're going to which one?
No.
It's in your little manila folder where...
Tourism. Well, we changed it.
Oh, they're changing.
We changed already.
Well, good thing I didn't write it down to me.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, I can't do that.
Okay. Everybody ready? It is four o'clock. We will call the May 12, 2014 meeting together. Clerk, could please call a roll call?
Mayor, Householder.
Here.
Commissioner Blanchard.
Here.
Commissioner Crawford.
Here.
Commissioner Hardy.
Here.
Commissioner Shirley.
Here.
At this time, all who are able to do so, would you please join me in the salute to the flag in a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We move on to awards and proclamations.
The day of May 15, 2014, is Peace Officers Memorial Day, the week of May 11 through the 17, 2014, as National Peace Week in the city of Salina. Officer Danny Lemon will read the proclamation.
Ms. Lemon.
Hello. This is the proclamation of the city of Salina, Kansas. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15 as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which May 15 falls as National Peace Week, and whereas law enforcement officers play an important role in safeguarding the rights, freedoms, safety, and security of the citizens of our community, and whereas the city of Salina desires to honor life, excuse me, honor the value, dedication, service, and sacrifice of its own peace officers, of whom have been killed in the line of duty. Whereas 111 officers were killed in the line of duty in 2013, our community joins with other cities and towns to honor all peace officers everywhere. Now, therefore, I, Aaron Householder, Mayor of the city of Salina, do hereby proclaim the week of May 12 through May 18, 2014, to be Police Week, and call upon all of our citizens in this community to especially honor and show our sincere appreciation for the police officers of this city by deed, remark, and attitude. I call upon all of our citizens to make every effort to express their thanks to our officers, who make it possible for us to leave our homes and family in safety each day, and to return in our homes, knowing they are protected by officers willing to sacrifice their lives, if necessary, to guard our loved ones, property, and government against all who would violate the law. Sign this the 12th day of May 2014, at the city of Salina, state of Kansas, and the witness thereof, the sealed and the signature of the city are affixed.
What events do you have planned for this week?
On May 15, at Jerry Ivy, I believe we are having a memorial for the fallen. And as for that, I believe Chief Nelson would probably know more of that than I would.
7:30?
7:30 a.m.
Yeah.
At Jerry Ivy.
At Jerry Ivy Park.
Yes, sir.
And the public is all welcome, of course?
All public is welcome. The more, the merrier. We would like the, as many as we can get to come and show their appreciation for not only our city, but the fallen in the past.
That's well. Great. Thank you. I have your signed proclamation up here.
Okay.
There you go.
It's usually a pretty good turnout out there. It's a good deal out there.
We, of course, encourage all of you to attend that. At this time, as a citizen's forum, this is an opportunity for any person who wants to come forward and speak about any issues that aren't on today's agenda. Of course, you'll have time to talk about those items as they appear on our agenda. So if there's anything any citizen has, a concern or a thought or anything they'd like to bring before us today, now is that time. Seeing none, I will move us on to the consent agenda, as we have no public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time today.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of May 5, 2014. Item 6.2, Resolution Number 14-7099, appointing members to various boards and commissions. Item 6.3, authorize the purchase of a replacement pre-owned asphalt roller with Murphy Tractor in the amount of $27,500, and a trailer from K-4 Trailers in the amount of $4,820.55. Item 6.4, accept the offered drainage adjustment for Pheasant Ridge Edition Number 2, Block 2, Lot 1 through 14. Resolution Number 14-7101, authorizing lease purchase agreement with Kansas State Bank of Manhattan for the purpose of acquiring eight Zoll series defibrillators. Item 6.6, authorize purchase of two chlorine and two ammonia feeds at water treatment plant from Hawkins, Inc., Water Treatment Group, in the amount of $36,343.30.
Is there any item that a commissioner would like to have removed from the consent agenda? If not...
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, sorry.
I would like to remove item number 6.3 from the consent agenda. I have a question about item 6.5. I don't know that it needs to be removed or not.
Why don't we remove it if you have a question on it?
It was just in terms of, it looks like there are two motions involved.
Oh, maybe just a technical...
On that item. That's...
Why don't we remove it, and we'll take a look at it as it comes before. Any other items the commissioner would like to uphold? If not, I entertain a motion.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion to approve the consent agenda with items 6.3 and 6.5. Removed. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. That motion carries 5-0. We'll bring up 6.3, and this is Mr. Fraser.
Yes. Do we have a specific question, or do you want to go through the whole presentation?
No. My only question was, something like an asphalt roller, is this a common use piece of equipment? I was curious about time utilization in particular on something like this. Is that something that's looked at when you consider purchase versus, say, lease of a piece of equipment?
Well, the purchase of the, it's a commonly used piece of equipment. Anytime we do our asphalt work, when we'll put that material down, we'll need to roll it. As far as owning it as compared to renting it, it's much more efficient for us with the amount of work that we do to own our own roller, so that we can be able to, be able to roll out the new asphalt. It wouldn't be as effective or efficient for us to be able to rent one. I think to have our own, and being a used piece of equipment, we found is that this gets us into the price range that we have budgeted of 30,000, although this was about 2,000, or it was actually a little bit more than that. It was $2,300 more, is that we still feel that we'll be able to bring that in within the amount of money that we have in the sub-CIP for vehicles and equipment.
Okay. It was the time utilization was the only question I had about that. If you use it, you know, 60% of the time or whatever.
Throughout the, I mean, actually, is it, probably we would be using that piece of equipment, I would think, as soon as I start making hot mix, which I would say is it kind of depends on the weather. You can get that as soon as April or May, and then you could run that even sometimes, sometimes even into November. It just depends on the weather conditions. But it would be used almost every day throughout that time period.
So is this a piece of equipment that we'll be using, that we don't rent now, so that we might be making repairs in a different fashion than we do now?
Well, we own a roller now. This is replacing that. Is that we're getting, we're going to be getting a, it's a used piece of equipment or a previously owned piece of equipment. It doesn't have that many hours on it, but it fits within our budget.
Okay. So we do have evidence and experience that shows that that really is something...
Yeah, we've been in the asphalt business for many years here, and that actually we've expanded that out by having, we've got like what they call a zipper, which is kind of our own little machine to be able to take out, mill asphalt out. And now that we've got, we've had that for several years. And now with the ability to remove it and to be able to replace it, we need the roller to help compact it down.
Right. And that piece of equipment to place the replacement pavement was the piece that we purchased about nine months or a year ago? Didn't we purchase a piece of equipment recently that was, that we were able to do more paving with, smaller jobs?
Yes, right, the lay-down machine. Yes, that's correct. Is it, so we have, yes, exactly. Is that we have the zipper that mills it out. We've got a lay-down machine that'll apply it, smooth it out. The roller is part of that whole process to be able to compact the new asphalt that we have.
So we'll be able to do more and better projects.
Oh, yes. Oh, yes.
Any other questions for staff? I entertain a motion on 6.3.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we authorize the purchase of the pre-owned asphalt roller from Murphy Tractor in Topeka for the amount of $27,500, and the 12,000-pound trailer from K-4 Trailers in Salina for $4,820.55, for a total of $32,320.55.
Second. Motion is second to approve the purchase of the replacement pre-owned asphalt roller for Public Works. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries 5-0. That takes us to 6.5. I think you had more of a, maybe not for Mr. Frans, but a question maybe for Mr. Bangston. Was that correct?
I think so. It looks like on this item that there may be two motions, separate motions rather than one. And that's why I was questioning whether it should be in the consent agenda.
Greg, I think I can take that. All right. What you have in your packet is a blue sheet for today, or a request for commission action for today, which asks for you to pass a resolution. Attached to that is a request for commission action that actually dates back to March 3, at which point you took the action to purchase the defibrillators, which was one motion, and a second motion authorized us to buy a lease purchase. And that second blue sheet was placed in the packet today, just as a matter of reference, that you've already actually done this. The bank is requiring a formal resolution, doing what you did by motion on March 3. I apologize for the confusion. So really, all you need today is a motion to pass the resolution.
Very good. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Any other questions for staff? Okay. I'd bring that back, item 6.5 back for a motion, potential motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass Resolution Number 14-7101.
Second.
Have a motion is second to pass Resolution 14-7101. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries 5-0. That takes us on to administration.
Item number 7.1, Resolution Number 14-7100, amending the public sidewalk financing policy.
Mr. Stack.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This is a longstanding ordinance that we've had within the subdivision regulations, 894066, which basically stated that costs for all sidewalk improvements shall be paid by the benefit of property. And then the city actually pays for the handicap ramps that are put in with projects. And then when a sidewalk improvement is initiated by a resolution of the City Commission, they're not always initiated that way, but when they are, it should be paid at a 50-50 rate between the benefit of property and the city at large. For many years, I'm just kind of reading through this. This was a long history. It's hard to tell exactly when and how it worked, but for many years, there was, we did finance sidewalk projects with a couple different options along our arterial streets, and then as well as in areas around schools or parks to fill in gaps. Not sure why we discontinued that in the past, but it's definitely something that's come up, and kind of felt like, when I got here six years ago, I thought, well, you can only really work on arterial streets. But that's not really, not really the past practice here. And definitely, we have a lot of park areas and schools and core parts of town where we just, Dean kind of helped us explain sidewalks were put in prior to the mid-'60s, and there was a time when they weren't. Then they were, 1980, they were required again. And so there's just gaps of time when we've had sidewalks put in, and then when we haven't. And so it's just hard to say exactly why they weren't or why they were, in which area and in which street. But we'd like to have more flexibility with that to actually put them in into areas. And we do have some sub-CIP categories where try to do arterial sidewalk project, try to do our ramp projects. We have some sidewalk repair money. So between those, you know, $130,000, we don't always find a lot of sidewalks that have trip hazards next to inlets, and so we may not use all that money. Sometimes we get good bids on ADA ramps, arterial sidewalks. Sometimes we don't, aren't able to find exactly the right spot to spend exactly that amount of money. So when we get a request, we'd like to have a little flexibility. Somebody wants to put in a sidewalk on their property near a park, which is the reason for this coming up this time. It'd be nice to have that flexibility to do it. So, worked with City Manager's Office to help us look at revising this policy, and basically added a section to the ordinance, or to the resolution, 894066, which just gives us more flexibility, and basically put in what is part of our strategic plan, is to build, try to develop in the core, develop neighborhoods, schools, parks, and then provide sidewalk access to other necessary public facilities and services. So as we find these, or as they arise, or as areas develop, or as people make requests or put in, a lot of times they say, well, we're willing to pay a portion of this if you'll help us out. Well, it's nice to have that kind of flexibility. So as otherwise authorized by the City Commission is the other option here as well. This would just give us more flexibility. So I will, not really a fiscal note issue at this point, but we have had a request that we would like to consider around Oakdale Park, and it's a less than $5,000 request, so it's not even a big deal. It's just, it would sure show that, yeah, that's a good place. People are obviously walking there, so we understand, let's go together and put in a sidewalk in this area. So that's what this is kind of for. So I will entertain questions.
Any questions for staff?
Yeah, I have a question on this. When we're considering utilizing these funds, do we have any sort of criteria or checklist that we want to prioritize to leverage this? I mean, I did, I do like that the ones near Oakdale Park, and I like the part about making sure it's near parts and providing that connectivity aspect. And I do like the idea that, of looking at the core neighborhoods and the central core of the community, look to kind of bring some of those areas up appearance-wise a bit. Is there, do you anticipate more requests coming from the core area?
It's hard to say. We haven't had a lot over the years, and so we really don't have a good, you know, if it's this many pedestrians are in this, we just don't have a real good objective criteria yet. So it's something we may, may want to consider, depending on where it is or how many people are actually walking on it. It's, you know, the ones that we've considered are, there's a path in the grass, so you know people are walking there. So it's, that one seems pretty, pretty no-brainer, but it's hard to say, well, why is that one, why shouldn't we do this one over here? So we don't really have good criteria yet for that.
Okay, because I'm just thinking, I'm just thinking ahead to the part where we want to measure the results of this.
Right.
And just want to make sure that we're getting all the information we need up front, so that when we go to find results, we have all of that in place.
Okay.
And hopefully, there'll be a component there where this is all input on the GIS, so that, you know, we can then again also look to see and maybe help to monitor the success of this. Because I think that probably the more the word gets out of the availability of this program...
We might get a backlog, possibly.
Right.
Okay.
To where we may want to prioritize and have some sort of more detailed criteria to make sure that we're leveraging those funds in the best way possible.
And Commissioners, one thing is that certainly, we would not let these requests interfere with those that are already budgeted and arterial roads and things like that that are already out there that have been approved. So this is if they're remaining dollars, and I think you're right, if there's a significant volume, but kind of prioritize what needs are being met and which would be the most important needs, given the budget allotment that's remaining for the year. But this does give the flexibility to fill in those little missing connecting links. It's not coming through, is it? Or is it, you're looking up.
Yeah, we're just looking. Commissioner Hardy passed me that. I was curious if the PA microphones were on out here. Do we know? You're getting them there. Are y'all hearing it out back okay? We just want to make sure. Okay.
Okay. So anyway, to give us that flexibility, usually on little small links here and there, you know, where we can do it, to say, okay, we got, it kind of goes back to the sidewalks at, you know, 2030, maybe in this case, 40, 50, 60 years ago. The public might have said, well, why are you building a sidewalk to nowhere? And we say today, if we built more sidewalks to nowhere, today they would go somewhere.
Right.
And so it kind of fills in based on that, especially based on where the policy changed. We didn't have those connecting links. Now it gives us an opportunity, if it arises, to do that. I hope that we do get enough interest, as you're mentioning.
You're not.
I don't know if we will or not. I've been in communities where we've created a formal, a real formalized, like a 50-50 program or something, and you still don't get the interest you'd like to have. But you never know. So at least it'll give them a flexibility to fill in the gap, and if we get any kind of volume, we'll have to formalize that approach a little bit more.
Right. And just part of the approach to it, you mentioned the sidewalk to nowhere. Just that probably within some of that criteria and the checklist and so on, will help to avoid situations where we fix a good portion of the concrete on one block, and then further down the block, it's impassable and unusable. And just to make sure that, you know, we're making, making sure that if we're doing something on a block, that that entire block is now accessible, and that type of, just looking at it broadly in those, in those terms.
Maybe it's another tier of criteria or something you're saying?
Well, just to kind of make sure that the overall idea of making things connected and accessible.
Block by block, maybe.
Is, is the overriding objective versus checking off, well, we fixed that sidewalk. And just making sure that the fixes are accomplishing what we want it to do. And so we're not leaving gaps in, gaps, gaps in the accessibility. Because we have put quite a few of those handicap ramps, and in a lot of places where the handicap ramps are in, but once you get off the ramp, there's nowhere to go.
No sidewalk, right, yes.
Well, even if there's sidewalk, there's broken sidewalk or uneven, or, you know, just otherwise impassable. So just to kind of, if there's just something there that we can make sure that we're measuring, that we're getting the results we want to out of it. And that is for it to be connected and accessible.
Okay. Thank you.
Would, I was thinking in terms of, like, Republic Avenue. There are several gaps there, and with the realignment of schools, you have kids walking the length of Republic now. And, you know, I'm thinking, gosh, we need sidewalks here. And so I'm wondering, is this the kind of program that could be, is it all voluntary, or could it be made, say, okay, we're going to just do this, we need sidewalks here, and so you're going to have them? And the other thing I'm alluding to is that because of the 40, 50, 60 years of no sidewalks, people, I know have encroached onto the easements in terms of their own landscaping or whatever, and how that sort of thing would be dealt with as well.
Yeah, the collectors and arterials seem like that. It was one thing, we felt like arterial's kind of, it was kind of a constrictor, whereas there's quite a few schools that are on arterial. So it's helpful to have collectors or higher-volume roads to put sidewalks on. So that's, that's a good point about Republic. I guess we'd probably, go ahead, Jason, I don't know if you've got a better idea, would prioritize them at sub-CIP time, maybe? Yeah, that size of project would be in your CIP.
It's a bigger project.
Yeah, I don't see, the flexibility here for staff within the budget are really going to be pretty small little pieces here and there, if it happens to fit right into the plan. I think the larger ones, and even possibly a full block, those are going to be big enough of, this cost and the length, long enough in length, that I think those are going to be brought as more of a package to you with some pre-planning.
So you're just, you're talking mostly about lots or two lots?
Pretty small pieces here and there. Yeah, small pieces, more what this was geared for. Yeah, because most of the funds are tied up into the larger projects. It's just if we have funds available, there's a small piece that makes sense in the core part of our plan. I think it meets those goals, is, under the staff purchasing authority, we can go ahead and do that with whatever arrangement, might be a 50-50, who knows what it might be. But if they say, hey, I'm willing to invest and do something, would you look at it? And we say, well, we have funds available, it doesn't harm any other priorities, and it makes sense in our core plan to strengthen our neighborhoods and connect you to something, then yeah, we could probably do that. So they're going to be pretty small, generally.
Any other questions for staff?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any public comment on this issue?
I move we approve Resolution Number 14-7100.
Second.
Have a motion is second to approve 14-7100. Any more discussion on this issue? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries 5-0.
Item 7.2, authorize the mayor to enter into specialty contractor agreements with Col Valley Engineering for vapor intrusion investigation, survey, support services, and with ALS Environmental for vapor intrusion investigation laboratory support services.
Ms. Tasker.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. As you well know, for over a decade, the city of Salina, the airport authority, USD 305, and Kansas State of Salina have worked together to ensure that the trichloroethylene contamination of groundwater at the former Schilling Air Force Base is properly characterized and removed. These four public entities have negotiated for local authority and federal funding through the U.S. Department of Treasury Judgment Fund to resolve this. In May of 2013, the public entities entered into a consent decree with the United States of America and a consent agreement in final order with the Kansas Department in Health and Environment to move towards our desired resolution of this problem. These agreements allow the public entities to have the local authority to re-characterize the contamination through a locally managed remedial investigation and feasibility study. In the end, the result will be a complete remediation plan with a cost estimate, and the most important piece is the KDHE-approved corrective action decision that's necessary to initiate the cleanup of the groundwater. Once a KDHE plan is in place, that really sets the direction that we'll move forward for the cleanup. In June of 2013, the city entered into agreement for project administration and technical services from the Dragon Corporation. The overall project is estimated to be $9,363,000, and out of that, there's a portion that's slated for specialty contractors. It's a total of $2,222,000, which is the part that we're speaking about today. And in general, the specialty contractor component was separated from the Dragon Corporation's scope of work to allow us to use local contractors for these specialized tasks, and to be a part of the overall project, to allow them the opportunity to be included. The city is a contracting party for the public entities, and the Dragon Corporation provides the bid specifications and reviews all proposals and recommendations. And they also provide the oversight and coordination. The specialty contractors are directly compensated by the city. And we're just, this is the first of these specialty-type agreements that you're seeing. The portion that you received in your packet is roughly maybe a tenth of the entire agreement. There's many other documents attached, and glad to share those, should you become interested. In general, the city requested qualifications and proposals from qualified laboratory and surveying firms to complete the laboratory and surveying support service for vapor intrusion investigation at 12 buildings in operable unit number one. And operable unit number one is virtually the northeast quadrant of the Schilling Air Force Base area. And the west edge of that would be located along the east edge of the runway, and the southern portion would be near General Jim Road. So virtually about the northeast quadrant, the southeast quadrant is operable unit number two, and then everything on west of there is operable unit number three, to give you an idea of what we're speaking about. So in this unit number one, virtually, it includes the K-State facilities and Salina Area Technical College. So many buildings that are inhabited by a large number of people. We received two proposals for the survey support services, with one, the low being from Col Valley Engineering for $6,980, and the other from Wilson &amp; Company at $18,600. Three proposals were received for the laboratory support services. The low was from ALS Environmental with a total of $18,720, the upper being $20,770. The qualified contractors and proposals have been reviewed with the executive group of the public entities and the Dragon Corporation. And the collective recommendation, excuse me, is to enter into an agreement with Col Valley Engineering to complete the surveying support services in an amount not to exceed $6,980, and ALS Environmental to complete the laboratory support services in an amount not to exceed $18,720. The low was from ALS Environmental with a total of $18,720, the upper being $20,720. The qualified contractors and proposals have been reviewed with the executive group of the public entities and the Dragon Corporation. And the collective recommendation, excuse me, is to enter into an agreement with Cal Valley Engineering to complete the surveying support services in an amount not to exceed $6,980, and ALS Environmental to complete the laboratory support services in an amount not to exceed $18,720. The total budget for the laboratory and survey portion of the work was $27,000, and these total bid costs is $25,700, so slightly less than our original budget. It's recommended that the city commission authorize the mayor to enter into the two agreements, with the first being Vapor Intrusion Investigation Surveying Support Services to Cal Valley Engineering, Slyna, Kansas, in an amount not to exceed $6,980, and the second, Vapor Intrusion Investigation Laboratory Support Services to ALS Environmental, Simi Valley, California, in an amount not to exceed $18,720. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for staff?
Commissioners, just as a side note, these are pretty small in respect to some of the agreements you may see, and you may see some other small ones as well. In the future, as long as they're simple and the process went well, we'll likely put them on your consent agenda, but because these are the first two coming out, we thought it'd be good to kind of get you in the habit of seeing these.
Right. Thank you. Any other questions?
This is unit one, how many units total?
Three, three operable units.
Three operable units, and do they all have structures on them?
They all have varying differences of which buildings they will look at as far as for the vapor intrusion. There's a total of 30 buildings altogether, this is the first group of them out of that northeast quadrant, so-
So the ones following this will be roughly the same size contracts and so on? I'm just looking at it, when it says that the overall contract was for $251,000, and this portion represents $141,000, is that for just unit one?
The portion that's allocated to the Dragon Corporation, we're trying to proportionally break these apart based on the work that they will do in the building, so there's a little bit of magic in sorting that number out, but the other two are fairly hard.
Okay, yeah.
The intention is to have split it up according to the work that's left to be done, and there's some fairly lengthy spreadsheets that breaks it all down, so we tried to make as much sense of it as we can for you. But we have plenty of numbers to track and be able to ensure that we stay on budget.
Okay. Is, what, are you anticipating that you might have other companies bidding for the other units, or would this be most likely going with the same?
I would guess there could be others that may eventually, there could be other companies that could do the survey work.
Okay.
And this was unique, the vapor intrusion requires these SUMA canisters, and that's a pretty limited demand for laboratories. The next group that you will see pertains to the groundwater sampling, which will have a lot larger number of laboratories that could take a look at that work, and it's a little larger project. We may see additional survey companies look at that also, as it becomes a little larger projects.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may, or Martha, it might be of interest, as far as the sequencing, these specialty contractors will really come in one of four categories. You're seeing the laboratory work and the survey work today, and there will be more of those, though also be waste removal and drilling contracts, and those are, that captures all the subgroups, does it not, Martha, the specialties?
Different types of drillers, but-
Right, right.
But I think that would be the majority.
There we go. As those will come, you'll see, always see reference to a work plan, and those are work plans that are underway right now with consideration by KDHE, and as KDHE approves those work plans, then obviously the plan is implemented, and that will have a lot to do in terms of the sequencing and what you'll see as far as the order of these contracts. As KDHE approves those work plans, then that's when the work will be engaged.
Okay.
And Greg is correct, they've approved the groundwater sampling plan, a portion of that, and that's the next step, and then the step after that will be Plume D. So they will all have different titles and different locations, and many, many components to them.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you, ma'am. Any public comment on this issue at all? Always shocks me, these issues. I'll bring it back to the commission for possible action.
I move that we authorize the mayor to enter into the following agreements. Vapor Intrusion Investigation Surveying Support Services to Cal Valley Engineering, Slyna, Kansas, in an amount not to exceed $6,980. And Vapor Intrusion Investigation Laboratory Support Services to ALS Environmental, Simi Valley, California, in the amount not to exceed $18,720.
Second.
Have a motion as second, oh, I'm sorry, do we, or something, sorry, I thought I heard something.
Do we want to split those out, separate motions for each one of those?
I think the single motion works in this case.
Okay.
They could have been dealt with separately or together, depending on your, and I think, as the blue sheet was prepared, I understood a single action was anticipated, but-
Okay, just I figured two different agreements might, but if we're good, I'll second. Did someone second that already?
I don't remember who I seconded.
Maybe a motion and a double second. Any other discussion at all on this? Can we have a motion as second to award the following agreements to Vapor Intrusion Investigation to Surveying Support Services and Vapor Intrusion Investigation Laboratory Support Services? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries five zero.
Item 7.3 authorize staff preparation of special assessment engineering feasibility report for Phase Two River Trail Edition.
Mr. Gregg?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This item 7.3, as well as item 7.5, were collaborative efforts on the part of staff. This one lists me as the preparer, when it's actually going to be Mr. Andrews presenting. 7.5 lists Mr. Hobbie as the preparer, and I will be presenting that one. So I apologize for the confusion, but I'll hand it off to Mr. Andrews.
Okay. Okay. So 7-3, Mr. Hobbie, you're handling that?
7-3 is Mr. Andrews, 7-5 is me.
7-5 is Mr. Hobbie.
He's on first.
Yeah. Get my neck ready for this one, yeah.
It's called collaboration.
Yeah, there you go.
Just by way of background, and I had sat down with them and reviewed the contract, because staff wanted to make sure we understood the contingencies and what all was included, but the area that you see surrounded by yellow there on the screen is what we're referring to as Phase Two of River Trail Edition, and it's the portion of the subdivision that has not had any extension of utilities or public improvements whatsoever. And that property is owned by the Tilburg family and also Golden Eagle Estates. And if you see this red line here, that is the boundary between Golden Eagle Estates and River Trail, and then up here, that line continues through, and so back in 1998, whether you want to call it cooperation or forced cooperation, the Tilburgs and Golden Eagle Estates got together to lay out and plat this property because Golden Eagle owned this property that was on the other side of the Oxbow and really tied back with River Trail. So KC Development LLC, which is Kelly Dunn and Craig Piercy, have a contract to purchase this. They have filed a petition that is in front of you requesting approval of the use of special assessment financing to assist with the financing of public improvements, and that would include street, water lines, and sanitary sewer lines to serve Phase Two. So as a follow-up to that, they're also requesting authorization to have engineering staff prepare a feasibility report and resolution of authorization, and they have gone to a design team and have come up with a cost estimate of $814,932 for construction of needed public improvements. We did not put that in the report, but we roughed it out ourselves. It comes to approximately between $19,000 and $20,000 a lot, if you were carrying that over the 42 buildable lots. So this subdivision dates back to 1998, it covers 56 total acres, there's 136 residential lots, 94 are south of this river Oxbow, and the other 42 are north of that. Of the 136 lots, 120 are zoned for single families, 16, which back up to the levee here are zoned for townhomes or duplexes. None of this property is in the floodplain, but it is within 1,000 feet of the flood control levee, and that does impact the cost and the ability to have basements. And so this property, again, dating back to 1998, has developed incrementally from south to north, starting at Magnolia Road. The very, very first phase was done cooperatively with Golden Eagle Estates and was done through special assessments. The other phases of improvements through here have been done primarily through private financing. And so similar to the request that came before you from Mr. Byquist and Quail Meadows, there was, for a period of time, a moratorium on special assessment financing. That was lifted, and the resolution was amended to delete the word "will" and substitute and replace it with the word "may," indicating that special assessment financing is not mandatory, but is a discretionary item for the commission. And the other thing that was requested at that time was to provide guidance about how a residential development or a subdivision was requesting special assessment financing, how that lined up in terms of applicable comprehensive plan concepts, and so attached in your packet was a amenity checklist that was created by the planning staff just to go through and indicate how the subdivision is laid out, lined up with the concepts and the comprehensive plan. And so this is contiguous to existing developed areas on the west and on the north. There's obviously a lot more housing up in Golden Eagle and Wildcat Circle than what shows on that drawing. In terms of connectivity, there is the levee trail here that dates back to the mid-1990s and the construction of additional trails along Magnolia Road. This is interconnected with both of those, and then with the street connection of Eagle Crest Avenue, that allows students here who attend Stewart School to either by foot or bicycle get over to Stewart School without having to go out to Magnolia Road. So there is connectivity between this subdivision and Golden Eagle Estates. Again, we have trail system that connects all the way to Bill Burke Park. There are sidewalks installed on both sides of all the public streets in this portion of the subdivision that would continue, except for these two short cul-de-sacs where the sidewalks would not be required. And then in terms of neighborhood parks, at the previous comprehensive plan, the neighborhood park plan showed a future neighborhood park here, somewhat similar but smaller to Oxbow Park, that would tie the neighborhood with the levee trail system, and this area has been dedicated as public parkland, and it was 1.75 acres out of this subdivision. In terms of open space, what they did was they took advantage of this natural open-space area, and basically they have a natural detention basin where all the runoff drains into that old river Oxbow, is discharged through the levee here and goes over to the Smoky Hill River. The other feature of this subdivision along this row of lots, there are several locations where there are pedestrian easements that connect from Saddlebrook Drive up to the levee, so that residents of this neighborhood and others can get to the levee trail. And then as far as the types of housing, we pointed out that it has both single-family and two-family lots, and most of the development in this area has been larger lots and larger home footprints. And so the request comes to you from KD Development, and we've identified the following options. One would be to authorize staff to prepare an engineering feasibility report and resolution of advisability for Phase Two for your future consideration. It would not bind you in any way, you would still have the discretion to determine it wasn't advisable to move forward with a special assessment district at that time. You could postpone consideration of this item and direct us to provide any additional information you would like, either from us or the applicant, or you could vote to instruct staff not to proceed with preparation of an engineering feasibility report at this time. Again, we're talking about an already or substantially developed subdivision, we're talking about 42 lots here out of the 136 total. And so this would allow for the complete build-out of this development area, which again dates back to December 1998. With that, we have members of city staff that would be here to answer any questions you have.
Any questions for city staff?
Not at this time.
Thank you.
Okay. Public comment on this, or the applicant like to come forward and talk about these issues?
Kelly Dunn, 305-9 Quail Creek Place. Just want to thank Dean for the presentation. I did have a question for Dean. On the, number one, on the action, you said that they have no, if they vote to approve this, it's no commitment that we're going to do specials. I believe, I thought that's what we were here for, so we can proceed with paying for the engineering to get done.
What would happen is that you would, we would be moving forward with preparing an engineering feasibility report, a distribution of costs, cost estimates, that would come back to you. You're not pre-bound to approve that or find it to be advisable or feasible, it just obligates us to prepare that and put it, so it would still require a second vote by you, but we're doing this at this point in time so that staff does not engage in a great deal of time and effort to prepare a feasibility report that you're not interested in acting on.
Thank you. And just to give you a quick background, I've been building houses here for better of 20 years. My partner, Mr. Piercy, the same, I believe, pretty close to 20 years. We both have multiple subdivisions under our belt that we've been involved in, so we're pretty knowledgeable on the ways things are supposed to go, and I guess I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have any.
Yeah, how long has, excuse me, let me back up to this, how long has the KC Development LLC been an entity?
It's actually just where, we've been guaranteed the name, it's a new entity that we've just came up with.
Okay. And you say you're both of, are you both, you said both have experience currently, I know you're involved currently with other developments in the area?
I think we have multiple subdivisions that we've both been involved in.
Okay.
And I believe all of them have been done in this manner.
You financed them all through special assessments?
Yes, yes.
No, have you tried to secure any sort of private funds to develop these properties, either through a bank or through private investors?
Well, it's been a trick to get approved for, just to purchase the land. I mean, that's, and we've had to come up with a considerable amount of cash on our own self just to get the land bought, and then to do this would just be not feasible for us, and I don't think we could get it approved.
Okay, I mean, I know that you know that we're all several months into the process of talking about the-
Sure.
About our different opinions on whether the special assessment financing is something that ought to be, something that's done by, by a private organization or private investors, or whether or not it's the risk that the taxpayers of the city need to take on. So I think it's one of those things that always is a little, it's a little tricky when you state that you feel like you have a difficult time getting this financed privately, yet somehow we're tasked with the decision to decide that we want to do, we want to finance you and subsidize your development when, and I don't assume you've looked, that you've applied with anybody or pursued anybody, you're just assuming that you wouldn't be able to get-
Well, with the reaction we have from, there's just not enough collateral in a piece of ground like that to- of ground like that to get the financing for the streets and the utilities on top of the purchase of the land. Now, if we were landowners and we didn't have to use money to buy the land, then there's probably a possibility there.
Okay.
So, and, you know, just to go back on the subdivisions we've been involved in, all of them have had special assessments. I believe almost, I think all of them are full now. I mean, so we've used every lot that we've ever done with special assessments. So they've all been successful.
Does that include Magnolia Hills?
Magnolia Hills is not complete yet, but everything that's been completed at this point is full. We did Eastview Estates, I was involved with that. Craig's been involved with Piercy Court and, what was the name of the other one, Craig?
Stone Creek.
Stone Creek and Red Fox. And they were both done in this manner.
And then what about, what's the one over on Quail Meadows?
I'm not involved in the actual, I build over there, but I'm not involved in the Quail Meadows Development Company.
Okay.
But I do build.
The Magnolia Hills is the one that you are, though?
Yeah, right now. I'd say Eastview Estates, I think, was probably from the mid-'90s, and we wrapped that up around 2003 or 2004.
Okay, because there's, just as far as lots with special assessments on there that are vacant and buildable and so on, there are several, there are a few hundred lots out there that
Not with the price range of homes that we're going to be doing in this house. Actually, I believe there's probably going to be a shortage of these price-range lots in the near future.
And the price range on these are, because
We're saying 160 to 250.
Okay, because the ones in the south of here, I just did a little cursory check on the Saline County website, on the appraiser site, they look like they range between, they're right around in the 250 range. And some of them, the one on the corner there on one of those is up around 350.
Yeah, I think some have gotten up there. I know we've sold some over in the Wildcat Circle in the 150s, which is just right behind this area, and all the way up to two, and the two, the highest one I've done over there is 235.
Okay, and then there's still
And then we're going to have to do, you know, along the flood control levee, we're going to have to probably put in slab homes, which, you know, then we're going to be down there in that 160 to 180 price range.
That's a lot for a slab house.
Go get bids on everything and just see what it adds up to. It adds up quick.
Are those, are there any of the, I know the ones that are just south of that along the levee there are duplexes. Are the ones that you're putting along the duplex, along the levee, are those proposed to be duplexes as well, or what are those?
I prefer that to Dean. I'm not sure on the zoning on those.
There's three lots, or four lots there along the Wildcat Circle. R2 or over.
They're zoned R2, but we have R2 zoned lots that you can build single-family on. It's the builder's choice. Just because they're zoned R2, we have R2 lots in Wildcat Circle that have single-family homes, so it's the builder's choice.
And how much of, and this is probably, I won't ask this question to you because it's not your development, but I know there's some, several vacant lots on some of those. And then, you know, we always hear about how there's not a lot of available lots to build on, but being that you are a homeowner, you have a lot of other options of buying property in other existing subdivisions, don't you?
As far as lots in other areas?
Yeah.
Like, say, River Run or
River Run or Stone Lake.
I think anybody's available to do that, yeah.
Okay. So, I mean, I just want to establish that there are buildable lots out there in the community. There's, and the last I checked, there weren't very many of them sold out there at Stone Lake, I think it is.
I believe they have requirements and covenants that will restrict you from building anything. I'm not going to give a price point out there, but with the square footage and what you're required to build out there, I don't think the price range would be, you know, under 200 or anything like that, or even under 250. But I'm, you know, just speaking freely, I don't know if that's the case or not, but I think the price of lots are higher, and I think they're wanting bigger homes out there.
Yeah, and I can appreciate the sensitivity towards price point. This seems more like it's a price point, lower price point by necessity, that the physical conditions make it such that you're not capable of building basements in there or getting the price.
I can't remember. I think there's 17 lots that are within the 500-foot line, and then there's, the rest of the lots are within the 500, 1,000, so there is some requirements, but it makes it, I mean, it's not near stringent, so it makes it capable of putting basements in on the other 24 lots or whatever there is, 25 lots. But the Wildcat Circle is just almost full. There's just very few lots left over there. I believe all the lots at Quail Meadows are either built on or sold to builders or owners. And I just don't know what other comparison there is as far as lots with that type of housing in it. Most of the lots that are available are more high-end lots, more $300,000 to $500,000 or house lots.
Well, that seems that the people that have been developing lots have been, that's been their development of choice. It seems like this one's kind of, would like to be that way because it started out that way, but kind of just because of the physical conditions, the houses have to be cheaper.
It's market-driven, too.
Yeah.
I mean, you want to build what people are buying. And the absorption rate for higher-end houses isn't near as high as it is for the 150 to 250 per se.
Well, I think that kind of, being that it's all market-driven, I think, kind of goes back to the old argument that if the market demands it, is it really necessary for the public to subsidize and finance the development? That you would think that if the market demand is there, you would have private investors and/or lenders that would be willing to take that risk?
We haven't been able to find any.
Okay. Well, I appreciate you answering my questions. I really do.
Sure, anytime.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
And that's all I have for
Any other questions, anyone? Comments? No?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Any other public comments on this or thoughts or? Okay, I'd bring it back to the commission for action or more discussion or?
I am.
Comments?
I was thinking about one person I was talking to. I will throw out questions every now and then, not knowing what I'm going to hear back, but I was talking to one young professional, he's an attorney, and I said, asked him, I said, "Well, what could we do for you to make your life better in Salina?" And his response was, "I'd love to be able to pay for my specials and my mortgage." And it surprised me. He was thinking, you know, it makes my payment cheaper. And I think that some of the, all of the discussions we talk about, we don't really talk about the impact on the home buyer. And in this particular case, and I imagine there are other people out there, too, that would say, you know, they'd prefer to have a cheaper home payment, mortgage payment, have those specials amortized over 30 years rather than over 15 years. In my particular case, I was a neophyte home buyer on Applewood Lane buying a new house. I was surprised, a year after being into the house, that there were specials. I didn't even know that. And so, you know, it's one of those things, it's, the home buying process is probably done a little differently today than was back in 1980, but it was an education to me to know that there were people that really care about how they would like to pay for their specials.
You know, just informationally, I believe they can pay for that special through their mortgage. But I think the problem is, is that some home buyers get into a situation where they only qualify for a certain amount. So if you throw the extra $25,000 to $30,000 of the utilities portion of the house in there, instead of a $150,000 or a $250,000 house, it's now a $280,000 house, they may not qualify for the 280. So I think sometimes it's that type of situation that I think people find themselves in from time to time. And I think that sometimes people end up getting themselves stuck with a little bit more bill than they realize, whether they know, a lot of them know going into it that they have that, but when the reality comes to write the check for it, I think it tends to sneak up on people, so.
Commissioners, just to kind of add to that, you're correct, in the sense that they can, if they can qualify for enough and the house appraises that enough for the, whatever the purchase value plus that cost, they certainly have that option to do that. So from a technical perspective, the answer is yes, and you're correct, in the sense that the market will, and maybe their financing, ability to be financed, their creditworthiness will dictate whether they can actually, you know, put it in place and practice.
Seems like one of the arguments that I remembered hearing back when we were having these first discussions, and this was actually coming from, I'm not going to say builders, but people in that community, I don't specifically know if they're builders or electricians or wherever they may be, but the comment we heard is that they wouldn't appraise if they were required to put the specials onto the house. Whether that's true or whether anyone can truly speculate that, I don't know, but to me, that would seem a bit disturbing, that somebody would be moving into a house that doesn't appraise, that you're buying a house that you're already upside down in. And so, again, I can't, those people weren't probably lenders, I don't think, and I don't know that there's any truth or, it was just purely their opinion of it, but it was just interesting to hear that that was one of the arguments that some of them made, was, hey, these won't appraise, so we have to do it this way. But that kind of ran counter to what I thought was, seemed like not a good reason to do that. And so, you know, probably part of where I come from on this is I look at trying to raise the overall value. I mean, there's been sort of a plan, at least for myself, to try and raise the overall value of homes in Salina, to maybe more reflect the selling price, to reflect maybe what the county has them appraised at. I'm sure people would like that. And it just seems to me that without having the specials upfront, it sort of gives an unfair apples and oranges comparison when people go shopping for a house, when they go look at a 200,000, we'll just use round numbers, a couple of $200,000 houses. Most people, like maybe Commissioner Hardy, who moved into a house and maybe didn't realize there were specials there, I think they cover it pretty well now, and most people know they're there. But it's still, you look at two $200,000 houses, and this one over here is really 240 or 230, and this one's 200, it kind of gives an unfair sales advantage to the other one. And I don't know that there's anything you can do to remedy that, other than the specials be paid upfront. So, I mean, there's a lot of, I guess, suspicion of what could be or what couldn't be. Different people have mentioned, but for these houses, people wouldn't move to Salina. We hear that argument a lot. But I talked to a doctor the other day that said one of the frustrations he found when he moved to Salina is he went to look at a development and asked about using his own builder, only to find out that he couldn't use his own builder, that they had to use one of the builders who was building in that area, or maybe had an investment in that area. And that's perfectly fine if somebody owns the development, but what I find disturbing about that is if the city is financing it, it allows somebody an unfair advantage in the market to control those lots a little bit longer, and allows them to do that. Now, if, when I buy a bunch of inventory for my business, if things aren't selling, I kind of get a little more sellable as those bills start coming due. I start to let the free market decide what needs to happen. I've got to discount this, I've got to sell it. So if somebody comes to me and says, you need to, you know, I want to buy a lot and build a house, if I'm setting lot-heavy and I'm owing money, I'm going to be selling lots. But if I'm only having to pay the minimum of the specials and I don't really have that capital outlay, it allows me to hold and manipulate that market a little bit longer. And I think just the basic of economics, I think that we hurt the free trade of our own community and the ability for people to build the houses they want or buy in the price ranges they want, when we sort of artificially manipulate the market by these. And I know that the homeowner buys the special down. The city's not truly, in a sense, giving the money away. That's not the issue, but I just worry about what we're doing to the market locally, and would we have a more competitive, which benefits the home buyer? And would we, could we raise the overall value of the homes if we let the market decide? Those are more of the questions that I look at more so than some of the other issues. I know issues like default have been brought up. That's a possibility. That's not a big, at least for me personally. I don't think we've had those issues. I suppose it could be a minor worry, but that's not one for me. It's more of the market manipulation and the free trade that happens when investors get in there. And again, and I have to agree with Commissioner Blanchard on that, if there is a market for these homes and people are buying them, it would just seem to me that there would be plenty of people out there willing to invest. I mean, if I knew that, hey, I'm going to invest in 82 lots or however many, 54 lots, 42 are here, and I can make X amount of my money, I'm going to invest in that. And it just seems like that there would be willing participants to make money if the houses are there and there truly is a market. So I suppose my biggest thing is, and maybe it differs from other people, is just simply the manipulation of the market and what should be allowed to happen on a free market.
In a situation where you allow specials, special assessments, do you think that is one way to dissuade developers that have their own financing from coming into town because it's more expensive to compete?
I think it, I think it could, only because you've got people that are used to competing in an open and free market to where they know it's more predictable. Here, you don't know. You don't know if you throw down your own money into a development that two months later, somebody's going to come in with a plan and have the city finance them. So I think it does create a bit of an unfair playing field that says, if only for the fact that it makes it, the predictability go away. I mean, things need to be fair and predictable in order, on any investment. I mean, you've got to be able to kind of know what you're dealing with. And I think that those, I think you can even question whether or not it's fair, but certainly it makes it unpredictable. And just as far as the affordability goes, too, on that is that I think, you know, we do have a lack of affordable housing in town. I don't think, though, that when you look at affordable housing as the bare minimum of the price you're paying for a home, that clearly reflects what affordable is. I think affordable goes into how close you live to services that you, whether it's your work, your school, the places that you go most often, what your transportation needs are, and things such as that, what the energy efficiency of your home, how big of a home you have, how much it costs to heat it. Things like this all go into affordability on homes. But probably the biggest thing for me is that we just had a study session that was talking about road repair and maintenance and what it costs annually to repair existing roads. And so I think the question really comes up is, when you're using public financing for private development, which is what this is, I think you need to look at how you're leveraging what your goals are and what your vision is for the future of your community. And I think when we talk about we need to get more to reusing some of our existing resources and infrastructure, when we subsidize and publicly finance brand-new streets that we don't have the dollars to currently maintain the ones we have, I think we're working in a direction that's opposite of where we're trying to get to as a city in the general direction. And that is, I could show you pictures, and I won't get to that, but I could show you pictures of existing subdivisions where the specials aren't even paid for yet, that have been crack sealed probably one or two times at least, where there are cracks that are three inches wide and 10 inches deep. And these roads are going to need maintenance and repair. So when we hear the argument that, well, the tax dollars that come off of those new developments are paying for all that, well, they're really not. We have police and fire services that go out there. We have neighborhood services. I look at some of these neighborhoods that aren't even 15 years old yet, which is the lifespan of a special assessment, and there are property maintenance code issues that are fairly extreme in some of these areas. I think we need to do a better job of taking care of what we have before we start subsidizing and financing more roads that we can't, and infrastructure that we can't seem to currently maintain adequately already. And just one final thing on this, is that I know personally, when I look at this and I'm asked to make a vote to, again, I'm asked to make a vote to, again, finance or subsidize private development, I look at this, and I want to know more, I want to really be swayed as to why, I want to hear reasons as to why this needs to happen, versus kind of currently making arguments about why we shouldn't do it. I mean, I think it's good to say, well, these are the reasons why I think we shouldn't. But I think if I were to vote to say, yes, I think this would be a wise idea to spend taxpayer dollars on more infrastructure when we can't take care of what we have, I think if I were to vote yes on this, I'd have to see more reasons to say yes. And I could tell you that I personally don't see anything in here that would tell me that I see reasons why I should do it.
I was going to ask too, and somebody can refresh my memory, on the residential subdivision amenities checklist, is there a correlation, or was there a correlation to be, was there designed to be a correlation between that and any kind of special assessment allowance or whatever?
The only thing I recall is that we discussed, I don't think, I think we tried to leave it a little bit more open than specifically pin down and say, we want to see this particular item or this. I think we sort of said in general, we would like to see these sorts of amenities. And I don't know that we were necessarily guaranteeing anything if they did those, we were simply saying that, you know, those might sort of be the kinds of things that...
We'd be looking for.
We'd be looking for.
Well, to go along with our comprehensive plan.
Yeah, to follow with that, you know, just again, you know, basic things as we know. And I think they've covered most of some of these items in here, but I think it does boil back more to, you know, like you said, just today's study session, and we talk about streets all the time, and that's probably one of the number-one complaints we hear are our streets. And I have a hard time, again, I'm not saying no to development at all, I mean, the person can finance and do whatever they want, I just have a hard time expanding that with city funding. When I saw some of the overlays and some of the things we had going on today, and heard some of the prices of what it's going to take to bring our streets up to the standards that I think our citizens already expect from us, it's very hard to take on more streets. And I think there's a lot more to it than that. We go back to my famous 360, at least it's famous for me. When we look at the fact that our town has developed this way, instead of reutilizing some of those areas, we have kids, and I've mentioned this before, that live three blocks from South Junior High, who go to Lakewood Junior, or Middle School. And so I think that comes down to everything. That's not just builders and city, I mean, that's school, that was planning that should have been done 30 years ago, and a comprehensive plan that should have been listened to and planned a lot more. And it's painful right now, I mean, like I say, it's like trying to turn an ocean liner. It's painful, people are used to doing things a certain way, and it's, but our town has become so lopsided in the way of, a lot of our infrastructure that's being underutilized is way up north, and we continue to add down south, but we're not removing the streets up north. We still have to maintain those streets, there may be one or two houses on there, but we still have to take care of those streets, we have an obligation to those people. So that begins to be an issue, and like I said, just, I mean, the timing of having the street discussion today with this is informative. And then having driven out and looked at some of those streets myself, looking at streets and areas that don't even have houses on them yet, to see what kind of shape some of those streets are in, concrete streets, not even, not just asphalt, but other materials. It's a little bit traumatizing to know that these things aren't even making it to their 15-year payback, and then being able to cite study after study after study from the U.S. Department of Agriculture, all across the board, there's been studies done that residential simply does not pay back. Every time you build a new residence, it costs a dollar, roughly 28 to a dollar 35 for every dollar it brings in in taxes. So every time we build these, it's costing us more money, and it just, it seems like the specials kind of encourage that easy growth, and I just have a hard time getting behind that and knowing that I'm basically, when I vote on something like this, contrary to what we want, what people want to say, that, oh, this is good for us, every time I would vote to support something like this, I'm basically telling the taxpayers, hey, I've got to raise your taxes, I'm raising your taxes again because somebody thinks we need this. You know, and I can tell you that what the taxpayers, if I had a one-on-one conversation, would say, they would say, well, let them finance it themselves. So it's very hard to sit up here and want to support this, you know, given all the information I've learned about streets over the past three years, and the cost of doing business, and fire protection, and what new schools cost, I mean, we, nothing centralizes that in my mind more than the recent $110 million school budget, you know, special election that went on. All of those things tie in every time you build a new house down south.
Commissioners, perhaps a question that might be valuable, if you're a builder and you're trying to kind of contemplate, what is the expectation? In at least this type of scenario of subdivision, is there an expectation that you would have of the builder in which if they met it, you would say, well, we would consider you for specials? I think before, depending on where this goes, and that might dictate what type of future requests, if any, you may get under the current approach. And so the question is, is, because clearly, I know there's a focus on core development, redevelopment, that's pretty clear. But in this particular situation, now this, I don't know if you can call it, you can't call it core as far as old core of the city, but you can, you go back pretty far with the subdivision, so it depends on, you can call it infill at this point probably. But in that scenario, is there a circumstance in which you could say, home builder, Mr. Home Builder, Ms. Home Builder, I would support some level of specials if you did, and you can fill in the blank, because they probably need to know at this point if there's any, you know, any thought to that or not, and if so, what, so the next time, they can say, well, okay, I know there's a different amenity I didn't bring up to you, or maybe there isn't one, and they just need to know that as well.
Right. And I can start with that, and I can tell you that, for me personally, and of course, I don't know that, I don't believe you'll find a consensus, is that I think that our comprehensive plan clearly defines a major portion of that being redevelopment. And so I think it would be safe to say that for at least the relatively, I'd say for right now, and probably going into the future until there's substantial progress made towards redevelopment, that I would be opposed to special assessments on greenfield development entirely, that it would be a tool utilized for redevelopment purposes only.
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead, Ms. Crawford.
I was just going to say, I hate to say no to any kind of development, because that creates jobs in the community, for plumbers, electricians, carpenters, and we need jobs.
Redevelopment, I mean, you can build a house, it's plumbing, whether it's redevelopment or a greenfield, so. I mean, I agree with you that it's not saying no to development, because it's certainly, and I hope that the applicant doesn't think we're saying, by all means, don't do this, we don't want to have to take care of the roads, but if the market's going to bear it, and you can finance the project yourself, then I think that that's a risk that you need to take. I just feel like if we have clear direction that we want to go in, and that is to encourage redevelopment, I think when we subsidize new development, I think it makes the cost and the difficulty of doing redevelopment exponentially more difficult. And so I just have a hard time saying, I'm welcome, I'm open to incentivizing something that I think this incentivizes what we're really trying to get to.
Yeah, and just to maybe touch on a little bit, what Commissioner Crawford was saying, you know, when they redo the Dillon store, that there's going to be contractors working there. And so our whole concept is, is if there's a need for the homes, the homes will be either redeveloped or remodeled, or there's always going to be work for these people. We're not gaining the population to continue to build, and we saw the studies of how limited our population growth is versus how much the square footage of our, and square mileage of our city has grown. Those people are going to work. I mean, I have rental properties, we employ plumbers and electricians, I mean, and I'm sure that continues through town. I would kind of agree, I think the comprehensive plan calls out for some new development, but I think it's been lopsided. I think it's been 90% new development and 10%, maybe I'm being gracious with the redevelopment, but I think it needs to be at a minimum, get us back to a 50-50, but I think the comprehensive plan even tilts more towards a probably 70-30 or 80-20 type of feel. And I agree, I think I would have a hard time, it's nothing personal, I like Mr. Dunn and Mr. Piercey, it's nothing against them, and by all means, if they can find the special financing, you know, build away if the market bears it. I just have a hard time up here, again, going against the comprehensive plan, going against reuse of our areas as we spend, you know, core money on Iron Street to try and redevelop that, as we put money into the Dillon's area and try and redevelop the core of town. We have some incentives in place for redevelopment, we could expand that. We've had meetings talking about what's the best way to encourage builders to look into that area of town. We've heard that, hey, this isn't what we do, but, you know, businesses change, you know, how people do, things change. Maybe they get into this business and decide, hey, this is a lot easier to do some of this redevelopment than we thought. I don't know, you know, I'm not a builder. But I do have to watch out for where the taxpayers' money goes, and I agree, I just want to see more redevelopment in town, more use of the streets. I don't want to pay for streets that have four houses on them, I want to pay for streets that are filled and used to the best of their ability before we look into that greenfield development, but that's me.
I've lived on Highland Avenue for 30 years now, and that whole neighborhood has changed over the period of 30 years, and I think it may be due in part because people, instead of renovating and rebuilding in that area as the houses start to decline some, are instead looking out to the edges of town. And instead of using, well, let's, you know, recreate Highland. And so I see that on a personal level as well, and it, you know, makes me sad. I think that it ought to be a, you know, a grand old street again.
Sure.
And I think it could be, if we had the proper incentive, you know, to make that happen.
Well, I think that the argument could be that people will say, hey, it's because people want to buy new houses. But I don't think that, I think that's a simple answer for it. I think that the answer truly is, is things like our minimum maintenance code, not making people keep other houses, have made investing in those areas of town somewhat risky. We began to alleviate that risk by putting things like minimum maintenance codes, standards in, and letting people know that their investments are going to be worthwhile. And when you make it easier for people to go out to those areas versus investing in those homes, that does, I think, take away from areas like Highland and Santa Fe or some of those grand old areas, you know. There's been some redevelopment, and let's face it, the trends were different. When we started doing specials and starting building down south, that was the way America was going. But when you look at recent studies, recent trends away from suburbs, and people moving back more to the cores of the city, it ebbs and flows like anything else. And studies, again, are showing with a quarter of people's income going to transportation, even in cities like Salina, between your car and your gas and all those things to work, that people have got to move closer to where they work, where they eat, where they sleep. And, you know, granted, this isn't New York City, or where people are, you know, driving two hours into work or whatever, but it's still on our micro level, is a similar ecology, if you will. And I just think that as, you know, why not look at what the trends are happening? There's a reason that cities are going to this, the cities are looking back more towards the core. It's not just some random abstract Salina idea, in fact, we're a little late to the party probably. There, you know, people do want to move back to these areas. There is still a need for new homes, no doubt about it. People will still want to buy Mr. Dunn and Mr. Piercey's houses, I have no doubt. But to encourage it at taxpayer risk, not, I don't want to use the word risk, but at taxpayer dollars...
There is risk.
Yeah, there is some risk. But again, and it's like we said a couple of weeks ago, we're trying to make decisions, not just for now, sure, you put the new streets in and they look great for a year or two, but we've got to think 30 years from now, our kids and grandkids are going to have to pay for those streets if they stay in Salina. And so is it right that we have a similar footprint, the sizes of cities that are twice our size? Is that right? Is that good planning, you know? I would say no. And so I think that's my biggest problem, is just the long-term cost of expanded areas. Again, if the market drives it, I'm not ready to stand up here and say, no more development, we're drawing a circle around town, I'm not saying that. But I just can't encourage it with tax incentives, because I do think it takes away from areas like Highland, in those core areas, where people may want to invest. We've had 30 years of specials that have allowed people to go out there, so we've had 30 years of people not really reinvesting in those homes in the core towns, so we've got a lot of making up to do. Again, it goes back to that trying to turn a big cruise ship around. It's going to take a little bit of while, it's going to take some adjustments in attitude, and some thought process, and a lot, going to take a really strong minimum maintenance code, you know, where people know that those investments are going to be worth doing.
Commissioners, I didn't mean to get you down in the theoretical that deep, it's not, good to hear that.
It's easy to do with this group, it's very easy to do with this group.
My reason for asking is that, you mentioned the amenity checklist, and that is correct, it's not intended to be an index by any means, but it was intended in response to a study session discussion a few months ago, where there was, seemed to be, at least we thought, some desire to look at maybe some level of special assessment in this type of setting if certain amenities were there. So it was intended to inventory those amenities for your consideration, which is kind of why this process was brought here. And I think, what I'm looking for is, in that scenario, is there really a need for the amenities checklist in that case, or are we looking at different amenities, or trying to figure out what you're looking for? Because I don't want to give you more information in your packet than you need if that's really not what you're looking for.
Well, I would say this, that the comprehensive plan residential subdivision amenity checklist that we have here is a checklist that ought to be required if you want to build a residential subdivision, regardless of who's financing it. I think that if you want to have requirements of what you expect to have in your neighborhoods, I think what we were getting at in that conversation was, it started out with, you know, these need to be quality projects and quality subdivisions. And at least from my point, because I know I brought up a lot of that, is that what quality, there are certain things that go into the quality of what defines quality. And I think that the minimum we ought to say if we're going to invest in roads and neighborhoods and everything else, they ought to be good quality neighborhoods. And I think that when we started pulling out things out of the comprehensive plan, to define what a quality neighborhood is, I don't think that they need to be held as a carrot out there for financing, I think they ought to be required as an approval of a subdivision. I think it goes to, this is probably a better checklist for the planning commission.
Well, Commissioners, I'm not arguing whether there should or shouldn't be with regards to meeting the comp plan, I'm just going back to that conversation, trying to interpret it. Because if none of these items on this checklist would satisfy that question of, that lifts us up to a quality level that would justify some level of specials, we need to know, and I think the builders would want to know, developers, what would be, or is there anything? And I think, because, I mean, we want to, when they come to us and they ask us questions, we need to be able to answer those questions, and we thought that there probably was some threshold at which you would say, well, that threshold of certain quality amenities would allow us to consider special assessments, at least at a certain level. I'm hearing this evening that at least nothing on this list would get you there, so I don't know what would get you there, and we're trying to figure out if there is something. Otherwise, if they come to us in the scenario like this, we would say, well, we can take your request to the city commission, we always do that, but based on conversations and past similar requests, they're not going to be interested in special assessments, because it's not in certain areas of town that they'd like to see that development. I guess that's really what I'm getting to.
I think that what Mayor Householder alluded to is something that I'm also thinking about, and that is that, I don't know that I'm anti-special assessments per se, it's just that the balance really isn't there right now. The, you know, if we get back to 50-50, I think we're talking a whole different ballgame than we are now where there's very little emphasis on redevelopment, and all of the emphasis is on greenfield. And I would, I think I would think differently if we, I saw a vibrant development process going on all over.
One thing I would add too, just on, and that's, he is correcting my take, I want to see more of that. One thing I would add, you know, if all of a sudden there's a huge industry, Tim Land's a big massive, you know, 300-job company out there that's coming in, and they're paying premier wage jobs, and there's a need for homes, and we understand that no few developers could develop that easily. You know, I think that would upset things a little bit, I mean, that might change things. We understand you probably couldn't redevelop that much in that time, there's an immediate need for housing, that might change the ballgame a little bit more.
I don't know, I'd be real careful, that Junction City kind of went down that...
Well, yeah, I would agree with that too. I mean, we want to make sure that it's a long-term, we don't want a Siemens here potentially, but, I mean, there's always going to be things that could come up and change that, but as a general rule, if we have the same trends of growth, the same kinds of jobs, and, you know, are steady improving, I still want to see that tilt back towards at least a 50-50 mark of redevelopment. And I know there's a difficult, that would be a difficult target to sort of follow, but I think we'll know when we're up to 50% development, you'll see some huge changes in our infillers. And again, I just point out, maybe for the at-home players who might be watching this... And again, I just point out, maybe for the at-home players who might be watching this, that doesn't mean North Salina. I mean, that means Albert Street, some of those areas in town that have been let to slip below a standard that I think is acceptable for our community. I mean, these could be midtown, I'm not picking on Albert, but just that area, you know, I mean, midtown areas in town that we consider somewhat new. You know, I want to see those areas taken care of and investments made back in those communities. And that's where I would want to offer specials on redevelopment or some tax incentives or some of those that we have in the north area, you know? I want to see more of that. Just anything we can do to try and keep from growing that debt load on these streets, so...
So, I know I haven't heard from everyone, I don't know, Commissioners Crawford and Shirley, if you have thoughts on this, but let me summarize, and certainly I'd like to hear your thoughts if you have them. But it sounds like that a majority of you are saying that in this scenario where you're kind of close to the fringe, whether it's true new greenfield or in this case, you're kind of filling in from what was plotted some time ago, that really isn't an amenity level that would get you to consider specials, you're really looking for different geographic areas of the community, generally speaking.
Well, I've tried to educate myself on this issue because these commissioners are pretty strong-minded on that, and they have more experience in that type of thing than I do. But I have taken drives around town and I have seen street signs out in the middle of, it looks like nowhere, and streets that we're taking care of, that has turned my opinion around a little bit on that. Because, and we had our street study in here just on, we're trying to bring the quality of streets up in Salina to better improve what we can for the people that are living here and need to drive back and forth to school and work. So I guess I've turned a little bit around toward that also, that maybe this is not so good. And then also, when I looked at, when we had our budget review by Mr. Franz, that also concerned me a little.
Some of us call him Franz.
I think he snuck out.
He's smart.
I appreciate the comment because, just to go back to something I said earlier, I think it's critical that predictability is there. So I appreciate the question on where we stand on that. And so that's why I don't have a problem with saying clearly that I would favor strictly on redevelopment, just so people know and they're not wasting their time and they're not doing any of that. And then I also think it encourages people that are interested in redeveloping, when they hear that, well, Salina wants to redevelop, that will start attracting the type of people that want to do redevelopment and will kind of change things around a little bit in the way we do things, I believe.
But as I think about it, too, you know, we also need new housing. And so I go back and forth on the issue, and I think developments do create jobs and we need that, too, so, I don't know. I guess I need more education.
I echo a lot of what Kay says. I just don't want to say, affirm no on special assessments in hopes that people will redevelop places that need redeveloped because that doesn't guarantee that people are going to redevelop.
Any thoughts or comments? I entertain a motion on that.
Mr. Mayor, I move to instruct staff to not proceed with preparation of special assessment engineering feasibility report for Phase Two of the River Trail Edition.
Second. Have a motion, a second, to, sorry, I'm looking for my wording, where you're at, John.
To, I'll reread the motion. To instruct staff to not proceed with preparation of special assessment engineering feasibility report for Phase Two of the River Trail Edition.
Let me see it here, sorry. Have a motion, a second, to vote to instruct staff not to proceed with preparation of engineering feasibility report, and, I'm sorry, your last wording.
For Phase Two of...
Of Phase Two of River Trail Edition. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
That motion carries, I believe, for one. Takes us to seven-four.
Mayor Board Appointments.
All right, let's go through. Do I just need to read this off, Mr. Bankston?
That would be fine, Mayor, if that's your wish.
I will, some of these are pre-appointed, but I will be on the Chamber of Commerce Board. Moving to Convention and Tourism will be Commissioner Crawford. Housing Authority will be Commissioner Shirley. I, of course, my position will be on the Library Board. We'll be moving Commissioner Hardy to the North Central Regional Planning Commission. Vice Mayor Blanchard will go to the Salina Airport Authority. Mr. Hardy will be on, or Commissioner Hardy will be on Salina Arts and Humanities Commission. I will be on the SCDIC Incentives Council. Ms. Crawford, Commissioner Crawford and Commissioner Shirley will be on the Salinas Lean County Building Authority. And Commissioner Blanchard will be on the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. Do we need to do anything on that, or is it just my sort of wishes?
Fiat, or however you wish to carry it.
Only moment of power I've ever had, and, yeah. And I think that's it, and then we move on to seven-five, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Item 7.5, Resolution Number 14-7102, authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement for public parking easement and the development of public improvements with Assurance Partners located at 201 East Iron Avenue.
Mr. Hobby.
Mr. Schreick.
Correct.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. As I'm sure you're aware, Assurance Partners is well underway in terms of renovating their recently purchased building at the corner of Iron Avenue and Fifth Street. And their site plan involves work in the right-of-way, and they've approached the city staff about the possibility of a shared use parking agreement, and there's a number of elements to the site plan that we've worked collaboratively between Development Services, Engineering Staff, City Manager's Office, City Legal Counsel, Assurance Partners, and Assurance Partners Legal Counsel to prepare for you today, the agreement that we have on your agenda for your consideration. You may recall that we also worked with Assurance Partners and Salina Downtown Inc. on two applications for community development block grant funding in hopes of getting some funds for addressing blight in the downtown and being able to fund facade improvements that were above and beyond what Assurance Partners might have had in mind. Unfortunately, apparently, we weren't blighted enough in comparison to other communities in one fashion or another, we did not receive those grants. But what I would note is that Assurance Partners went ahead and made the facade improvements at their own expense that were questionable in terms of whether they'd be able to do that as related to the grant funding. At this point, there are about six items that I want to go over with you that all interrelate with this agreement. And there's a list there on the first page of your blue sheet, and I would add to that a little bit of qualification first. Staff has broken them into three categories. One is what I would call synchronization of work that might normally be performed by the city in the right-of-way with the Assurance Partners project. So they've proposed work in the right-of-way that would typically fall to the city, would go through a capital improvement prioritization process, and it would be something that the city might undertake within the right-of-way. The second item is private site work that would typically be expected of the property owner, and in this particular case, they're offering to share some of that private work, being the parking lot, to make it a shared public parking lot. And then thirdly is city funding of some site improvements, or what we would classify as site improvements, in return for that parking lot. So having said that, item one on our list is the Iron Avenue curb line relocation and elimination of the angled parking spaces on Iron Avenue. And, I'm sorry, I told you the site plan, Mr. Nelson, let's go to the area, that might be more helpful at this point. If you're familiar with the site, on the south side along Iron, the curb line currently kind of juts into the north, and there are angled parking stalls that frankly are half in, off the roadway and half on the roadway. This project represents an opportunity to take the curb line, move it south, and eliminate those angled parking stalls and stop those vehicles from projecting out into kind of the driving way of Iron Avenue. So Assurance Partners' site plan incorporated that possibility of a new curb line in their design. The second item is replacement of Fifth Street concrete, and you may or may not be aware that on Fifth Street, the curb line juts in and actually creates some parallel parking spaces along the curb line, somewhat offset out of the typical configuration of parallel parking on Fifth Street. And so their original proposal was to basically rebuild that concrete parking surface as well as the curb line. One of the things that staff identified as recently as this morning was that there are four streetlights, existing streetlights, that are currently outside of the public right-of-way. So this would also create an opportunity to take the existing curb line, move it two feet to the west, leave us enough space to relocate, as part of the streetlight project in the downtown, relocate the existing streetlights back into a location within the right-of-way and still retain the required sidewalk width to meet ADA requirements. So it's a little bit of modification from Assurance Partners' original design, but it would still create parallel parking spaces, paved parking spaces off of Fifth Street, and it would create the opportunity to create enough right-of-way width to relocate those streetlights within the right-of-way. So those are the two items that staff have identified as more typical city work within existing right-of-way. The third item on the list is the private parking lot installation, which is typically a private project. In this particular case, Assurance has indicated their willingness to make that parking lot available to the public for use in the downtown, subject to the terms of the agreement, which I'll get to in a little bit. The fourth item is more typically a private improvement, and that is the installation of three parking lot entrances, one on Fifth Street and two on the south side of the property exiting or entering onto Iron Avenue. The fifth item is relocation of a sewer inlet that's existing in the right-of-way to accommodate those two driveway entrances. As it sat, it was in the middle of one of those driveway entrances. And I would note that it has been relocated, and in the process of relocating that, the contractor identified a break in our clay storm sewer pipe and repaired it. And so we've already realized some benefit from that project. And then the sixth item on the list is replacement of the sidewalks on Fifth Street and Iron Avenue onsite, as well as replacement of sidewalks to the point of connection at the Iron Street Bridge, I'm sorry, the Iron Avenue Bridge, creating a point of connection between the proposed parking lot and Salina Community Theater in particular. So those are the six elements that staff has been working with Assurance Partners on cost estimating and design issues. One other thing that I would note is that the three parking lot drive entrances, our characterization of those being private, there was some confusion as this conversation started. As Assurance Partners approached us, it was referred to as sidewalk improvements, and staff took that literally as sidewalk improvements. And it wasn't until recently that we realized, it started scrutinizing the scope and sorting out work in the right-of-way and work on private property. And Assurance Partners understandably was thinking work outside of the, within the right-of-way was ours and work on the other side of the line was theirs. And so it wasn't until, frankly, Thursday or Friday of last week that we started realizing we may not have had a meeting of the minds all along, hence the need to really dive into this a little bit further. So the conversations have been ongoing for quite some time, but as I noted, it kind of crystallized the end of last week. On the second page of the blue sheet, the report goes into kind of breaking out those items as I've done verbally in terms of those three categories. So I won't cover that in great detail, but what I would tell you is items one and two on that list, that we would classify as typical work by the city within the right-of-way, account for $19,754 of expense as bid by Assurance Partners' contractor. Items, the other three items, the sidewalk replacement, the three parking lot entrances, and the Iron Avenue storm sewer relocation account for an additional $33,075 of expense as bid by Assurance Partners' contractors. For what it's worth, city zoning code does not require off-street parking in the C4 zoning downtown, but as we have discussed in other meetings, there is benefit to some public parking being available, and Assurance Partners has offered this up as being available outside of basically their working hours. And so if you looked at the entire project and the entire scope of work that Assurance Partners is proposing that the city partner with them in return for the parking lot, it totals $52,829. Under the proposed agreement, Assurance Partners would contract directly with Harbin Construction for construction of the improvements. Once they're inspected and approved by us, we would then reimburse Assurance Partners in that same amount. City staff believes that the improvement cost estimate from Harbin are reasonable. We have considerable experience with Harbin as a contractor and have confidence that they'll do quality work. Funds for the improvements would be taken from the 2014 sub-CIP budget for street and sidewalk and storm drainage repairs. And I would note, this in some respects represents, I wouldn't even say an acceleration, that implies that these improvements are on the list, but it represents a reprioritization of items, somewhat in conjunction with the fact that Assurance is cleaning up that corner and making a drastic improvement to the Iron Avenue corridor. The relocation of the angled parking represents an improvement to the Iron Avenue corridor along with the things we've already talked about with Sabalot and the street improvements there. So at this point, I'd like to jump to some of the specifics in the parking agreement. So in terms of that, I would call to your attention item number one, which is the fact that Assurance Partners would agree to grant to the city for the use and benefit of the general public, a non-exclusive irrevocable easement with a right-of-entry to use in perpetuity 35 parking spaces. So they are offering up the parking lot that they would be constructing. As I mentioned, the cost, if all of the items were agreed to, would be $52,829, which is a blank to be filled in in Section Two. You, as the commission, certainly have discretion to do all, none, or some combination of those items, and that blank would have to be filled in accordingly. I would call your attention to item number three, which is the exclusive use period. Assurance Partners has provided an agreement would have exclusive right to use the easement area for its employees, agents, tenants, invitees, customers, and guests, and the right to exclude the general public from using that during the period of 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. Understandably, they're trying to reserve the parking lot for their use during their business hours. Not to make light of the other items, but I would call your attention to item number six, which is maintenance of the easement area. Assurance Partners is accepting responsibility at its sole cost for the expense of repairing and maintaining the easement area. And then I'd also call your attention to item number seven. The agreement precludes Assurance Partners from making alterations, additions, or improvements that would have the effect of reducing the number of parking spaces. So it is an agreement for 35 parking spaces in perpetuity. It's irrevocable, and the maintenance expenses are solely Assurance Partners'. So having said all that, staff has identified three options for your consideration. Unfortunately, the third item got melded into the second, so. Option number one is to approve the Resolution 14-7102, which would approve the attached agreement for public parking easement and development of public improvements, and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement, conditioned upon development of a surveyed legal description for the easement area, which would need to take place if we're going to go forward. Option number two would be to modify that agreement and the provisions of that agreement in whatever fashion you might see fit. That could be the terms, or that could be the items that the city agrees to pay for as part of this agreement. And then the third option would be to take no action and withholding authorization to approve the agreement, but have the result of the city not participating in any of those items in terms of cost or those modifications at this time. So with that, I know we have representatives of both Harbin Construction as well as Assurance Partners here that would be happy to answer any questions you might have, and I would be happy to try to answer any questions on behalf of staff.
Any questions for staff?
Well, we're going to need about an hour here to read this, but...
You have my apologies for the short notice. Well, I would tell you, this is time-sensitive, which is why we hustle to get it on today's agenda rather than put it off a week.
Right. And there's a lot here, and there's a lot of this for that here, so I apologize if I stumbled through here. I know it's in here, but I haven't had a chance to really read it in depth.
Sure, they're understandable.
So when we talk about what's happening between the property line and the curb, or beyond the property line in the right-of-way, we've got these five items, and I'm kind of just focusing on the breakdown of the $52,829. If I look at it in general, I'm seeing that there's an agreement sort of as a, in exchange for allowing the public use of the parking lot, these, basically $52,000 worth of work that is involved. Is that, would that...
Yeah, I'd say that's correct.
In a nutshell, that's...
Well, I'd add one clarification, and as staff looked at it... Well, I'd add one clarification, and as staff looked at it, if you took the first two items, the Iron Avenue curb line and the replacement of the Fifth Street concrete work, those are items in a vacuum irrespective of the Assurance project today. It would seem likely that a property owner can come to us and say, you know, these are things we'd like the city to consider, and we might take up on our own through our normal budget process and our new, normal capital improvement project.
Right.
So those numbers are in the $52,000.
But I don't know that it's completely accurate to say those are in return for the parking lot as much as just something we're accelerating.
Oh, commissioners, to tag on to that, the initial conversation was really, started with the parking lot use for payment of the construction of the sidewalk and the trade-off for that perpetual parking lot use. And it's, we really, in working with them, identified that we really needed, it really made sense to get rid of the angled parking. It really made sense to improve the condition of Fifth Street, parallel parking, and get those lights in the public right-of-way. So that's why it's all aggregate, but the real trade, this for that, is really paying for the sidewalk in exchange for the use of the parking lot in perpetuity.
Okay, so the side, okay. So the other stuff would, as we say, we would be taking care of. Would that include the driveway approaches?
Typically, no, and I think as Mr. Skreg indicated, there was, as the conversation evolved, there was confusion about who does what on each side of that property line. And so normally, we would not, we would not do the driveway approaches. And, but we did, we did, the request was asked of us to bring those to you. Because of that confusion, we said we wouldn't. And I will say also, you know, timing is everything. Back when they, when Mike referenced that they, we submitted for the grant on their behalf, we didn't get that. At that point, they were contemplating, could we even afford what I'd call the highest-quality building facade? And at the time, thought, no, they couldn't. And then when we weren't able to get the grant, they still decided to kick in and do that. And so, you know, you can look at it a lot of ways. One way to look at it is to say, if you'd had a request for $9,000 for something that had to do with the site work back then, recognizing what they were going to do, it looks a lot different than getting it later. So there's a lot of ways to look at the value of the investment in the property and what they're asking, but from a pure development perspective, we would not typically do the driveway approaches, but you certainly have the flexibility to, again, look at the value of improvements, so look at it a lot of other ways. We just didn't want to characterize it as this would be part of the typical development approach, but you certainly have that flexibility to look beyond that.
If I may, I'd add one other perspective, and that is, from a development perspective, we would typically look at whoever's proposing to put in the parking lot would be the one that would put in the drive entrances. Depending on how you look at this being a shared parking lot, it, that might be another way to look at funding the driveway entrances.
Right. Well, I'll tell you what, I look at this and hear, and what I've been able to read through, and from what the presentation that you gave was extremely helpful. I think it fits in really nicely with a lot of the goals that we're trying to accomplish. I think that the willingness to share the parking, which is, can tend to sometimes be a little bit of a tight thing downtown, I think is great. I think improving, I think that we would want to improve the street and the sidewalks and those areas to bring it up to the standard that the building is, because it's, looks great. And I think it's an opportunity, when we can leverage some of what we have, to really help out the other projects that we're doing, the upgrade of this particular property. I like the curb on iron because it's going to help be a nice clean tie-in to our Iron Street reconstruction. I like that the sidewalks are going to be accessible fully, so when we have the new paths and everything, part of the Iron Street reconstruction, that we've got that nice entry into downtown that looks really clean, and that, and that not only complements downtown, but I think complements the investment that they've made in the building. So I, I like it. And the only question I have is on the parking, about lighting. Is there lighting in the parking lot, or?
Fair question. I should know the answer to that, but I don't. Does staff know the answer? Dan?
There are currently three poles being installed in that light. That way, there will be plenty of parking lots.
Okay.
Okay, for anybody who couldn't hear at home, there's currently three poles that are being installed in that parking lot. Is that correct? Okay. Great. Any other questions for staff? I've got a couple just that came to mind. And again, I would say it's a beautiful, it's really a nice plain John Lai walked over, kind of the, that little park area, and just kind of got a general look when city staff was over there doing some work, and it's just a fantastic looking building. And I echo what he says about, this is exactly what we're looking for, redevelopment in those areas. And I was glad to see that you went ahead and stepped up and did the extra improvements because it looks incredible. Two thoughts here I have. The one is, do we currently enforce parking on our city, I know we do on the streets, but do we do it in the parking lots as well? Are there three-hour parking in the parking lots, or no? Are they long-term?
There was a change not too many years ago when we had a parking evaluation, so there is a combination of both short-term and long-term, mostly long-term, but a combination in our parking lots. And we, on our city-owned parking lots, we do enforce that.
Okay. And do we anticipate, this is just almost somewhat humorous, but I can't let a day go by without making some kind of wisecrack, but what should happen if all of a sudden they decide that it's not working out too well for them? Do they have an option to give us $52,829 and say, thanks, but no thanks, we don't want your people parking here anymore? I'm just saying, do they have an out?
Probably a question for Greg, but to me, this says that this agreement's in perpetuity.
Okay. Just because there may come a time where they look and say, hey, we got more than we bargained for here, I don't know, but I would assume, from what I read, it's all the way. It's long-term. So I think it looks great.
If I could add one clarification, the rules, regulations, and enforcement fall to Assurance Partners as well.
Okay, during the day.
Any permissible parking in the downtown overnight, what have you, may be different according to Assurance Partners' rules. The agreement provides that they make reasonable rules.
Okay, okay. Any other questions for staff before we bring the applicant up? Okay, would the applicant like to, or whoever, or their representative like to approach?
Jim Wilson, 1160 South Marymount, and I'm president of Assurance Partners.
Great. Any questions for Mr. Wilson?
Just a comment, I really appreciate what you guys have done in making the investment downtown.
Thank you, thank you. We've had, what we think is a great project, we've had immense cooperation with the city administrators, and it's one of the things, I think we spoke of Friday, Jason, is that we wanted to demonstrate a willingness and the ability for us to work well together and have a project that we can all be proud of, and I think we're going to be fortunate and cause that to happen.
For sure. Anticipated opening day?
Well, it'll surprise you, but next week.
Wow. That's why we didn't put this item off a week.
I saw they're telling, you guys can have a parking lot yet by then?
Well, the rain kind of hampered. We were delighted for rain, so we can't gripe about that. But it's, it'll make it tight, but we think we're going to get there.
Great, great. And you'll have a little grocery store, your people go over and get a little sandwiches at lunchtime now, and.
I think it makes us short one restaurant, though. All of a sudden.
There you go.
Well, the extra 32 people downtown.
Oh, yeah.
We need another restaurant now.
Downtown, yeah.
Absolutely.
That'd be great, great. Any other comments or questions for Mr. Wilson? Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions for staff, or any other public comment on this?
Can't miss the opportunity. Gary Swartzneweber from Salina. Congratulations, perfect example, free market, public process, working together, exactly what you've been talking about and strategizing about, to use George Bush's word. Good job. One among not very many members of the public here to congratulate you, but you get it.
Great, thank you. There's no other questions or comments? I'd entertain a motion.
I move that we approve Resolution 14-7102 approving the attached agreement for public parking easement and development of public improvements, and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement, conditioned upon staff's development of a surveyed legal description for the easement area as defined in the agreement, and the attachment of the legal description as Exhibit C to the agreement.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to approve Resolution 14-7102. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries 5-0. We have no development business. That takes us on to other business. Do we have any other business at this time?
Commissioners, I have two items. I don't think will take too much time, and I'll ask the deputy clerk to go ahead and pass out the letters. You, I think you've received these, we sent these out to you when we received them in our office, but the first one is a request from Ashby House to the mayor, and of course, we're kind of all for one and one for all, so that's why y'all get it.
Thank you.
But what they're asking for is they're asking, I have a request for an exemption from the excess use charge on our monthly water bill, and the excess use charge has to do with going over what would, well, kind of paraphrases, you're sort of a winter average type situation. And they indicate their daily census of the folks that reside there temporarily, varies from day to day, and it creates a wide range of water usage. My purpose in bringing this is want to make sure and to publicly disclose that you have it. And then secondly, if, the first thought of when we look at a request like this, because it's not uncommon to get a request to change something in our water rates, and with a water rate, you are trying to have a pretty broad brush because there's so many nuances, you could just go crazy dealing with them all. So we wanted to provide you with this. I don't know that we have a practical answer for you if you wanted to actually consider a change there, but I guess the point in this is that you don't have to deal with it tonight, being its other business, you can if you want to, but if you felt like there was consensus to try to do something with this, we would just ask that you place it on an agenda in the future. But as I mentioned, there's not a real practical way because one, addressing one nuance leads to a million others, and I don't know that we have a real practical approach to this, but.
Do we do this for any other facilities?
No.
Yeah, I mean, I can only give my opinion. My thoughts are, as the enforcement becomes difficult, we tell people to drive around, remember what address is there. And while I appreciate the work that the Ashby House does, I appreciate the work a lot of other members of our community do as well, and if we're not making special exceptions, I would have a hard time doing this for them as well.
And I agree with that.
I agree too.
I just have a quick question on that, though, because I agree also, but I do have a quick question, in that is there consideration already given to the, what is the basis for their allotment, so to speak, of saying, this is how much water is up until the excess charge? I mean, is it based on being a lodging facility, a multi-use? What are they, what is their, what is the basis for establishing what is their allowed use?
Right, which is a structure then.
That's an excellent question, yeah.
It's probably best for Ms. Tasker, utilities director, to answer that. Quite honestly, water customer accounting actually does that, so Martha may not know that, so I don't know the specific answer to that.
Actually, yeah.
That is true. I would have to defer to water customer accounting. I know that Cindy Benneke has spoke with the individuals there about the process and how their bill is documented, but I don't believe she found an easy way to get around it either, because it just opens up the door for many, many other locations to ask for the same type of benefits. But I know that Cindy Benneke has explained how their bill is proposed, put together.
Okay.
It's kind of interesting, when I read this letter, my thought process automatically went to conservation. I was starting to think, well, low-flush toilets and low-pressure faucets and plantings that are drought resistant and blah, blah, blah. So I was thinking, well, I wonder if they've approached things from that angle as well.
I'm just, my concern was just that their basis for a normal charge was something that was reasonable for the number, and whether or not they're, and it looks like they may have looked at whether there was a solution that was not a waiver, but that was, in a way.
I wished I could be more specific, but I briefly talked to Cindy, and I believe that when I looked at the several months' worth of excess use rate, it was in the range of three to four dollars a month. So it wasn't a large amount of dollars, and it was going to be more of an issue to try to calculate that independently for them, and then how to answer for all the other citizens. But it wasn't a large amount of dollars, but every dollar counts.
I appreciate him looking at the, man, I thought we looked at the bottom line.
Yeah, I was whispering here to our legal counsel, I occasionally pay more than that.
Yeah.
But I did want to make sure that you had the request.
Yeah.
If you're comfortable, we'll go ahead and correspond with them and let them know that at this point, we're not going to be able to change the ordinance, but anytime if you want to place it on the agenda, you can. The second letter is from the Sling County Fire Chiefs Association, and has to do with fireworks this year. And this was received, by the way, prior to the last rain we had, just for context purpose, contextual purposes. But on April 24th, they had a meeting, and part of that was discussion about how dry it had been up until that time, and also the climate forecasting through June potentially and into July. And we know forecasting is just that, it's forecasting, it can be right, it can be wrong. And so they were concerned about the current dry conditions and how dry they might be going into the Fourth of July holiday, and particularly were focusing in on a May 20th, I believe, yeah, May 20th date, because I believe that must be the date that vendors, fireworks vendors start to think about purchasing their supplies for the upcoming season. And they indicated in their letter that it was twofold, the purpose was twofold, one, to bring your attention to the increasing fire danger based on the best climate and drought data available from the National Weather Service, and two, to allow sufficient time prior to May 20th so that vendors can be notified that sale and discharge of fireworks may not be allowed. And they go on to, in their letter, and say, "At the current time, the Sling County Fire Chiefs Association is recommending, in the strongest terms, that sale and discharge of fireworks within the boundaries of Sling County and the City of Salina be prohibited for current year 2014." And this letter is addressed to the City of Salina, the Sling County Commission, both planning organizations or divisions, and then the Emergency Management Department of Sling County. And staff looked at that, and the real question is, the biggest policy question for us, unless you want to make a wholesale change to your ordinance, which could get complicated too, is how do we deal with that type of situation? And in Section 14-5710, it says effective burn ban. There's one way that we deal with it, and it says, "If the governor or the Board of County Commissioners has issued a burn ban on open burning in an area including the city, there should be no offer for retail sale, retail sale, delivery, consignment gift, or other means of furnishing consumer fireworks, and there should be no use of consumer fireworks during the time the ban remains in effect." So we don't, our ordinance doesn't anticipate, you know, five weeks out. It really can't, and it really places the burden on the shoulders of those who can issue the burn ban. And if there's a burn ban, and that's a risk at this point, that's taken by the vendor. And the problem is, is that it would be nice to say, I have a crystal ball, I know it's going to be dry all the way through then, and be right. If you're wrong and it rains, the vendor will be the first to say, well, I sure would have liked to have an opportunity, because at that point, it's not about the fun of shooting off fireworks, it's a business entity having an opportunity to conduct business in your community. I'd sure like to have that opportunity. Can you change your mind? There's always going to be another option when we, when we use a forecast and it's wrong. And so staff believes the best thing to do is not change the ordinance and go by that. We have asked, and you could ask as well, if Sling County would consider, it's up to them, an extended ban if they feel that it's necessary. I don't know what impact the last rain had and whether that's a factor. I suspect by itself it may not yet be a factor, but I don't know that. So certainly you or another entity can ask them to consider kind of setting the date out ahead, and they then carry the burden, though, of, you know, if the forecast is wrong and then we get more rains, and all of a sudden, we feel good, then we flip-flop and change it again. You've got to be careful flipping flopping, you become arbitrary, and at that point, you may encounter some legal exposure by the business entity. So that's why we think it's probably best to leave that, but I did want to be sure and bring that to you, see if you had thoughts. If you did want to discuss it further, again, we could do it tonight, we don't have to, you could schedule that. This one is pretty time-sensitive, you wouldn't want to go past, probably next Monday, if you wanted to talk further. This, kind of changes of this could be difficult on the fly since it is an ordinance as well. So anyway, I did want to bring that to your attention.
I'm in favor of leaving it as is.
Yeah.
I think we need to be in sync with the county, and that, and the county.
On this issue.
Right, and the county is the controlling party in this one.
Right.
Yeah.
What is this, a free-market day or something?
Yeah.
Yeah, we did have a, also, in addition, sort of a compliment to this that came in afterwards, a correspondence from, who's known as Crazy Ed, Crazy Ed's Fireworks, and the thought being is, is there a proportion of the fee that could be forgivable on the assumption that they plan ahead, and all of a sudden, they think that we could end up being able to sale, they could sell them, but all of a sudden, the burn ban is in effect, whether it continues or whether it's lifted and is put back in place, and sales would not be allowed during the timeframe in the city that it would be sold. I don't have the fee in front of me, I want to ask Mike what that might be.
Well, it's provided in our comprehensive fee schedule. I think Mr. Weinbrenner's request was based on the fact that applications are due May 20th, but sales don't start till June 27th. So one of the scenarios he offered up was to be able to not submit, or submit his information until closer to June 27th. And the comprehensive fee schedule, if you'll give me a second, that's right, there's a base fee, and then there is a, there is a base fee of $2,050 for a facility of 1,500 square feet. square feet or less, plus $255 per square foot over 1,500 square feet. So it depends on the size of the facility that they're proposing.
I think when you look at the request, it's very well-intentioned. In order for you to accommodate that, you, I would presume, because this is based, well, the fee schedule is based in a, I presume it was a resolution that adopted that, well, would be a resolution that adopted the fee schedule, so you have a little bit of flexibility there, but we would have to really think about, again, the nuances with regards to that, and what conditions, how much of the fee, different sizes, and that type of thing. You're, it's not as easy as it may sound, first blush.
Is that a formal request, or is it, is there an ability for a citizen to make a formal request of that?
Well, the conversation took place with the fire marshal, but it was explained that that would be something that would be forwarded to you as the city commission, so with his permission, that email should have been forwarded to you last week, I believe. So the explanation that they were given is, it would be at your discretion whether you wanted to take it up further.
Okay. Yeah, my opinion is, is like before, I'm satisfied with the way it is, as is.
The only question I have is, would there be any justification for moving the date for application? Is there a reason for that time period to exist?
There, I can tell you, those first couple of years, we still were running, by the time you deal with the boundary issues and site plan review and placement, property placement, we were right up against it in terms of getting from May 20th to getting applications reviewed and corrected by June 27th. Now, having said that, we've kind of locked in by, not by policy, but just by happenstance, into certain locations that are just repetitively being submitted, but if we had a new location, it'd be, I realize, May 20th to June 27th seems like a lot of time, but when, if you hit them with any review comment that takes a reaction on their part, finding a new location, getting their insurance, taking care of getting their site layout to meet the dimensional requirements, it eats up that time, surprisingly.
So it's a sizable investment on our part as a city.
In terms of staff review, yes. The ones that are the same site that we reviewed and approved last year are the easy ones. The ones that are getting close to residential neighborhoods and gas stations and on a new site, those are the difficult ones. Leave it.
I think we should just leave it like it is.
Yeah, I mean, I love fireworks, and I think it's, but we can't burn the county down, the city down in the process.
No.
I'm not anti-fireworks kids, but it doesn't look like there's going to be a Christmas this year.
Go ahead and provide the correspondence, I appreciate your contemplation of that.
Yeah. It is dry. We, I mean, those three fires, what, last week or something like that, I mean, the week before, good gosh. Wow, so we've had some of those like that.
I move to recess into executive session for 45 minutes to discuss with legal counsel matters subject to the attorney-client privilege for the reason that public discussion of those matters would waive the privilege and adversely affect the city's interest in the matters and reconvene at 7:05. That'll give us five minutes break.
Second. Motion to second to move into executive session for 45 minutes, reconvene at the 7:05 after a five-minute break between, do we anticipate any business?
We do not.
Okay, we're in executive session?
We need to vote.
Aye. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you for the five minutes.